...on July 19th. The time is 6:02. If you'll all please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. We have a flag back there, imagine it. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You know, if we're gonna think, we're just weird.
Well, we are. Come on. Okay. Item number two, Board Workshop, a employee onsite health clinic. Mr. Campoya and Mr. Cormona.
Good evening, President Nahara, Dr. Espinoza, members of the board. Tonight, we have prepared a workshop to present to you the options that we have if the district decides to open an onsite employee health clinic. Now, we have included this item as part of the agenda tentative before next week's board meeting. However, that agenda has not been published and it will be published tomorrow, so tonight we will probably be asking for direction from the board if we proceed in keeping that item as an action item for next week's board meeting. Without further ado, I do have Mr. Cormona, which is a Director of Employee Benefits, who will be doing the presentation in collaboration with Rebecca McGlothlin, and she is with Gallagher. You all approved Gallagher to be our benefits consultant, so she is with them, and she helped us come up with the presentation and provide you the information that it takes to open up a clinic. Without further ado, I'll have both of them present to you.
Good evening, Madam President, Dr. Espinoza, members of the board. Today's item, if I'm not mistaken, everyone has a handout, right? Okay, today's item includes an agenda, and the agenda includes a total of 10 items. I'll start with item number one, which is in reference to a survey that we conducted to get some feedback in terms of how our employees feel in regard to the idea of establishing a employee clinic. The survey was deployed on May 15th through May 25th, and it included six questions in addition to a comments or suggestions section. The survey, or the number of participants that we received through that survey totaled 1,200, and overall, the feedback was a positive feedback. I'm going to review... Oops. The first question is, when is the best time for you to visit the employee clinic? And out of the 1,200 responses, over 900 of them included or responded that during the late afternoon or possibly evening hours would be the best time. Number two, how likely are you to participate in a wellness, health promotion program at work? And we got positive feedback, over 90% were very likely or somewhat likely to participate. Question number three, what type of clinic appointment options do you prefer? And we offered a combination of... I'm sorry, they opted for a combination of both walk-in and appointment, and that received a response of 85%. Question number four included a series of topics that they would like to see in terms of the type of education or information, and the top four are related to nutrition, stress management, physical activity, and women's or men's health. Okay. Then how frequently would you use the employee clinic? We received, again, around a little bit over 73% that most likely that what you said, between two and five times per year, or at least once a year. Which days would you be best or most convenient to visit the employee clinic? And in this case, we only provided two options, just to again get a feel if they would like to see this clinic open between Monday and Friday, or to include a weekend date, and in fact, the greater response was towards having Saturdays available. The comments or suggestions, the top five were great idea, concerns about the location, and the location that we had been referring to throughout the presentations is a location over by Monwood High School that used to be a Texas Tech clinic. Would like family independence to be included. At this point, we've been looking at two options, one to only take care of our employees that are covered under the medical plan, and/or consider seeing cover dependents as well. Would like the clinic to accept other forms of insurance. Again, we're contemplating to see our employees only that are covered through our health plan, since it's going to be funded through our health fund, and also concerns about office wait time, and I think generally speaking, that's a concern overall, especially in the area that we're in, or meaning in El Paso. The benefits and advantages of opening a clinic, again, this is something that we have mentioned previously, early detection and management of chronic conditions, preventive treatments of illness, fewer urgent care and/or emergency visits, reduction of absenteeism, reinforcement of wellness culture, improved retention of employees, improve the ability to recruit new employees, lower health plan costs, and reduce cost of chronic conditions or severe medical events. And the last item is related to those high dollar claims that we see in our stop-loss Type of clinical services to offer. And we're contemplating the possibility of having a site where we are going to be able to provide minor care or care for acute illnesses, and possibly have a office visit fee of $10. A prescription will be provided or written by a physician, and if a generic prescription is available, we're hoping that the clinic will include a pharmacy that will be able to provide or dispense generic prescriptions at no cost. The services that we're looking at to be able to offer are related to preventive care, annual wellness physicals, smoking cessation, diabetes, blood pressure, blood sugar and cholesterol screenings, interim care for chronic conditions, arthritis, asthma, COPD, migraines, weight management, and gastritis, vaccinations and injections, flu shots, tetanus, hepatitis A and B, immunization services, et cetera, minor illnesses or injuries, ear infections, allergies, infections, colds, flu, cuts, bruises, urgent care, upper respiratory conditions, bronchitis, urinary tract infections, viral illnesses, and minor trauma. And those services or illnesses that you see referenced in this particular slide are... the information was pulled from what we have experienced so far as a group, so what type of services are people that are insured under health plan seeking services for? Next, we have the clinic layout, and again, you might remember this layout, it's been referenced before as well. We are pretty much already set up when it comes to the blue... let's see, blue aqua and purple areas, which is the office space, the patient waiting areas or exam rooms, and a possible conference room, which used to be a room that was being utilized for the retention of medical records. The area that right now is not set or set up to be able to serve as a pharmacy is the area that you see surrounded by orange, and that area will require some construction to be secured, since we're thinking that this will be the area that will be... we will be keeping the medications. There's no water supply, so that will be another thing that we will need to look at in terms of construction. This will also include a staffing configuration, and what we're looking at is to have a period of no more than 18 months for the completion of the project. We're not saying that this will be completed in 18 months, it might be completed sooner than that, but our goal is to not take longer than those 18 months. The staffing would include a pharmacist, a pharmacy tech, a doctor, MD, two nurse practitioners or physician assistants, three certified medical assistants, and one office manager, which also will serve as the nurse, or a nurse who would be the office manager as well. The estimated annual salary that we're projecting is a little bit over $760,000. In addition to this, other expenses that we will need to consider is those for such as malpractice cost, and this is for a physician at mid and mid-level cost estimate. The new first-year claims physician premium is between $1,500 to $2,000, maturity over five years to $6,500 to $8,000, and mid-level premium $300 to $1,200... I'm sorry, $300 to $1,200. Established claims physician premium is...
We said $1,000.
$1,000 or greater, and mid-level premium is $1,200 or greater. An additional expense to this would be the clinical supplies and equipment. Like I said, for the most part, the setup is already there, though there is no equipment needed to be able to provide services. That equipment is exam table, wall cabinet, base cabinet, sink, and faucet, fire lick, mic, stool, chair, glove box, waste basket, and so on and so forth. The cost for each exam room estimated between $3,500 to $5,000. The miscellaneous medical supplies, $65,000. In addition to that, there's some furniture needed for a waiting room, and the chairs' estimated cost is 220, between 220 and 250, the table coffee between... coffee table, I'm sorry, between 150 and 200, and end table between 200 and 250. During a last presentation, or one of the presentations related to the employee clinic question came up in regard to utilization statistics, and what we looked at to be able to provide an estimate in terms of the cost or savings cost is related to the variance between primary care physician, a specialist, urgent care, and emergency room visits. What we do is, we will look to the possibility of steering some of the claims or some of what we have experienced and be able to move over to those expenses over to the clinic. So more people would be steered to the clinic for a lesser severity of care, ER higher severity, PCP lower severity. Education, communication will be vital to encourage clinic utilization. So what does steerage mean? The intent is not to steer people who already are receiving care from their primary care physicians and from the specialist over to the clinic. Our goal is to be able to refer those employees, so for those employees that do not seek treatment currently, to be able to be referred to that site, so they can start their treatment or continue their treatment if they have interrupted such services. So a definition of steerage, directing employees to the employee clinic by encouraging them to use the employee clinic instead of utilizing primary care physicians, PCP, specialist visits, urgent care facilities, and non-urgent emergency room services. So what does that mean? Primary care providers will do routine checkups, preventive care, will take care of rashes or skin conditions, general health issues, disease management, a specialist, skin irritations, joint disorders, diabetes, and upper respiratory conditions. Again, this is the type of conditions that we see based on what we have experienced as a group that could possibly be steered over to the clinic. When it comes to urgent care, sprain or strain of ankle, knee, or shoulder, urinary tract infections, pink eye, bronchitis, emergency room or non-emergent visits, ear, nose, throat, sinus, earache, sore throat, respiratory bronchitis, flu, skin disorders, rashes, minor burns, acne, et cetera, urinary tract infection and parasites, or gastrointestinal illnesses or conditions. In addition to the type or the main type of reasons why they seek treatment from those primary care physicians or specialists, urgent care, and emergency rooms, we brought over some data in terms of the money. How much would it be... how much does it cost and how much can be saved if that in fact was to be able to be steered over to the site? And for that, Ms. Rebecca, we'll go ahead and cover that information.
We use some assumptions, using the... we made some assumptions actually, using the Cigna data from September 1st, 2016 to August 31st, 2017. And some of the categories that we looked at and were covering, as Mario mentioned, is PCP, specialist, urgent care, ER visits that are steerable. This means ER visits that shouldn't have been in the ER, that should have gone to your PCP, or a specialist should have waited an extra day to see their doctor, but it is very difficult for anyone to see their PCP timely, so that's why sometimes this happens. So the total annual visits for this timeframe was $21,000... I'm sorry, $21,000 visits. Total annual dollars for these services came out to $3.3 million. So average cost per visit for a primary care physician is $135. To see a specialist's average cost, it's costing the district, $154. Urgent care, it's averaging about $196, and ER visits that are steerable, that are non-emergent, about $979. And I know you're probably thinking, I know it costs me more when I go see the urgent care or the PCP. Yes, it may, but on average, for your whole district, this is your cost. This is what's hitting your bottom line. Oh, good, I did right. Estimated steerage, we're going to continue to talk about that now that, you know, we explained what steerage is. Category, you have your primary care physician, which is your PCP, your specialist, urgent care, ER visits that are steerable, et cetera. So PCP, the percentage of steerage, we're thinking like the first year, you'd probably get 10% of those visits. 10% of the specialist, for urgent care, about 5%, ER, 2%. And so those total visits to the clinic was going to be about 1,800 visits. Estimated savings is going to be $281,000. So what does that mean? How many visits is that going to be at the clinic for these particular numbers? And that's going to be about 7.2 visits per day. So we all know that that number could definitely be... this is low. This is low, because you've got to get the word out and you've got to get everybody to see the clinic. So the number could potentially be a lot higher. So we also took 15% of PCP visits, specialist at 16%, urgent care at 30, and ER visits that are steerable at 5. That came out to be about a little less than 4,000 visits, and that dollar amount estimated savings is $639,000. So that is 15 visits per day that have to go to the clinic. So the more volume, the more money the clinic will make. So we took these same assumptions, utilizing Cigna's data, and we used it for all members under Socorro ISD. And here, we have the PCP, primary care, at 16,000 visits, specialist at 13,000 visits, urgent cares were 8,500, ER visits 247. Total number of visits for that time period was 38,000. And these are your actual visits. Total annual dollars was $6.29. Average cost per visit, we're breaking it right down, same, $135, $154, $196, $979. So we've estimated some steerage to the clinic based off of those numbers. PCP at 10%, again, that's worst-case scenario, it's low numbers. 10% for specialist, 5% for urgent care, 2% for the ER visits that are steerable. Total number of visits would be 2,340. Estimated savings, that's $523,000. And how many visits would that be? 13 visits a day to that clinic, minimum. So we brought these numbers up a little bit higher, 15% for PCP, 16% for specialist, 30% for urgent care, 3% for ER visits that are steerable. Total visits to the clinic, 7,000. That would be $1.1 million, close to $1.2, and that's 28 visits a day to the clinic. Are there any questions on that slide? So going over the pharmacy rules and regulations, we would have to carry professional liability insurance to the clinic and the pharmacy and extend coverage to include the pharmacist and the pharmacy tech. For classification, clinic pharmacy would be classified as a Class AS, and this application for this particular license, you'll be able to dispense drug or device to the public under the prescription drug order and engage in compounding sterile preparation, so that means you can really dispense any type of drug possible through the clinic with that license. Licensing cost would be estimated about, just for the license itself, is $459. To get a DEA license, that's for to dispense narcotics, it would be about $731. And of course, there's going to be some additional permits for the office and the pharmacy and construction, and those costs we'll have to look at once we start the construction on the property. And to continue with pharmacy, pharmacy costs are going to run about $200,000 to $250,000. That's going to include shelving, software, the initial prescription setup. I mean, we're talking bottles, the caps, and storage and security, just other miscellaneous supplies. That's where the cost is for the pharmacy comes in. There's many things that we need to take into consideration. Estimated generic drugs to be dispensed, that was a question that we received, how many generic drugs do you think are actually going to be dispensed? And out of one to two visits for each person, 50%. So every one to two visits, one is going to receive a generic drug. Projected district cost, startup fee is going to be for the licensing, exam room, miscellaneous supply cost is going to be about $338,000. Fixed annual cost, those are going to be the salary, the clinic salary, the staff, about $716,000. So approximately the first year is going to be a little over $1 million. So I didn't include the malpractice cost because it depends... that cost is going to fluctuate depending on the physician you bring in. All right, and some of our recommendations that we would like to discuss is releasing an RFQ for the following, staffing for the doctor of medicine, and of course, the pharmacist for the clinic, just for coverage. So when the pharmacist is out, drugs cannot be dispensed, so you'd have to set up staffing coverage for the pharmacist, and as well as the medical director, the medical doctor onsite would want to cover staffing services. Prescription, software, dispensing drugs... I'm sorry, I'm having trouble reading that. Let me read it from my paperwork. We would definitely want to go ahead and release an RFQ, because there's many different softwares that are out there, and we want to get the best value for your dollar prescription supplies. We need... there's several drug suppliers out there, and we're going to have to go ahead and RFQ which vendor is best suited for the district, as well as immunizations and vaccines. So that would be our recommendation at this point.
I don't know if, at this point, are there any questions for Ms. Campoya or myself, but in terms of updates or information that we have available at this point is before you, and as mentioned by Mr. Campoya, our intent today is to receive direction from the board in terms of either to move forward or how to proceed when it comes to this particular item.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. In the proposal of $1.1 million that you included, I forget what page it's at. Did you include that the... included in that price, the striking of the pharmacy, the construction that would need to take care to make that place secure?
We won't know exactly what the cost would be until we actually have an idea of the type of setup that we're going to need to have for the particular pharmacy that we're looking at. There's no water supply on that particular side of the building. There would be some, most likely relocating of walls, some... a security door, a gate. That side of the building will need to definitely be looked at and see what...
Not even a ballpark figure?
No, sir.
So it could be another million, for all I know?
Nope. We don't anticipate that it will be that much, but we can bring that information as well.
Okay.
If you want a ballpark figure, I'd kind of look at it. There is water available on that side of the building, but I don't know if they want a safe toilet or what.
Do they probably have an office or...
In the pharmacy. In the pharmacy. There is restrooms on the back wall on the opposite side, don't know how the plumbing is running. You know, it's as far as the walls and stuff. However, there are two exterior windows that open up into that space and could present a problem. We have to fill them or barricade it or something. So if you want a ballpark figure, you know, I'd say it's a good picture, but I can tell you.
The premise of the clinic is that... I understand that we all care about the well-being of all our people, but everything comes down to the fact that people have to take responsibility for their health. I mean, I can put... I can give them all the medication in the world, I can give them this and that, but if they do not follow that, it's worthless. Now, the other thing is that in using the clinic, the people that live by Eastlake or Pebble Hills or in Socorro, just the moving over there to that clinic in Monwood, they'll find it, and I've been told, that that is not a good thing to do. Now, I have to see the doctors, lots of them. My Christmas meetings are mostly doctors and nurses by now, but if you build a good relationship with your doctor, all this don't need to be there, because you can schedule that, you can look at all the health problems that you have, and you can follow through with that. Even, you know, there's apps on your phones that you can use to... Even, you know, there's apps on your phones that you can use to check your blood pressure, check diabetes and all that, that you can follow, and they're free. So, I really don't see the expenditure, especially when we just told the people, all the employees, that we could only give them 2 million, I mean, 2% pay raise, and we're facing a $9 million this year. I just cannot see at this point the clinic to be a good idea.
Any other questions?
Yes, Ms. Gonzalez?
Mr. Gata?
We had that clinic before, a couple of years ago. How did that one do? Does anybody know?
It's my understanding that it was not a clinic that pertained to the school district. The site was being utilized by Texas Tech. And the services that were being provided were for students and not for employees.
On the survey, we have over 70,000 employees, and I believe only received 1,200. I don't think that's a good response back. But as far as the clinic goes, I personally look at it and I'm thinking, if you live, not only employees live in our district, southern, west side, east side, Socorro, northeast, I personally, if I'm a member of the district and I'm in a chance, why would I want to go somewhere where all employees are there and they're going to know them all the time? They might know when I'm sick or my illness. I'll come to a go to Concentra, Concentra or Cigna, I mean, not Concentra or Summit, because it's open for everybody. But just going somewhere just for Socorro Clinic, Socorro District Clinic, I think it's a personal thing, and just my belief is, I wouldn't feel comfortable walking in because it's going to be the same people there most of the time, there are the sick, it's the same people there most of the time, even the employees that are working there possibly. That's just my concern. And I just, I wouldn't say somebody lives in Socorro, driving up to Mangwood, where they could go somewhere to Concentra in northeast. Do we know how many employees in our district that are Cigna, that live in our area? I mean, would that make a difference? I'm just wondering if they live in northeast, are they going to drive all the way down to our clinic in northeast or...
They drive to work already, Mr. Gata.
Well, they drive to work, but I mean, if they're sick, I don't think some of the employees are going to come to work sick in any clinic afterwards. If they're sick, they're going to want to go on the weekend or maybe before school or I don't think they're going to go after school. Maybe I'm, I don't know, a million dollars, and Mr. Gonzalez, where are $9 million in deficit on healthcare?
So, Mr. Gata, what we're doing is, we did an adjustment to, of about $9 million, a fund balance to contribute to this year's healthcare fund. And in so doing, our attempt is to keep the healthcare fund in the black, actually, to put it into the black. We ended last year with about a $72,000 deficit balance. That's after making a $4.5 million transfer from our fund balance and the general fund to the healthcare fund. This year, we feel it's going to be about $9 million to make sure that it stays in the black. So, in that regard, we think we'll end up in the black, but it's going to take about a $9 million infusion from our fund balance of the general fund into the healthcare fund to keep it like that. I hope that answered your question.
Well, this would just give us another million dollars. I don't think we're in the business for healthcare. I think we're in the business to educate our students, and I just, I can't go this way.
Mr. Gonzalez?
All right. If someone can answer this question for me. Why did we start doing this in the first place? We did it to find another way to save the district money on correct, right? How much is this going to save if we go down this route? Potentially, the long run, I mean, if we're going to spend, like you said, $9 million just to, you know, keep us in the black, and then another million to start, probably a million and a quarter, almost a million and a half to get this going?
Right.
What are we looking at?
I mean, we know that the cost has started up. It's going to be a little over $1 million. And, you know, when we brought up the steerage, this is for all members, but if we did this just for the employees, again, worst-case scenario, this is very conservative number, that'd be $281,000. If we could reach the 15%, 16%, 30%, 5%, actually people going through the clinic, that's about $639,000 a year. So, you're not going to make your money back the first year, to answer your question.
Yeah, we're taking any business.
But exactly, every first year, small business, it's not break even. But, I mean, it was going, it's going to take, you know, several years. According to these numbers, if you have a really good year and you're getting the numbers through the clinic, it could take you two years. It could take you up to five years.
We still have the salary.
So, it's a missing, you know, until we know how many people are actually going to go through the clinic, and that's going to be part of the marketing campaign and education, these num, you know, it could break even the first year.
Of course. I mean, it can. And, you know, there's, you know, every individual up here has, you know, we've got some business owners, we've got some people, you know, running businesses, companies that, you know, yeah, we are in the business of education, but we're all in, we're in the same business. We're a small city, basically, is what I'm saying. We're a small city with a big budget that, at the end of the day, it's, we have our employees, we have our students, you know, we have these facilities, and we have to upkeep everything. And I mean upkeep everything, that's even including our employees. You know, in the long run, if it's going to save this district money over time, then that'd be a great decision for any business because you're already spending that money no matter what. And it's, you know, everything's a risk. Everything's a risk we do. This is a risk we're, I mean, it's a risk we take. If it goes well, it goes well. If it goes bad, it goes bad. Look at the Aquatics Center. You know, we took a risk, and it costs us money every year. You know? This is potentially the same money in the long run for this district. I mean, as far as employees, you know what? I wish I was married to a teacher right now. You know? Like, I'd be using it, you know, but I think in the long run, I think it is convenient. I think, I think our employees would like to, I'm speaking for myself, I was an employee, I would like to know that I can go to somewhere in the district where I can, it's just for me, you know?
I have, sorry, I have several questions. On the staffing configuration, you made the comment that drugs can't be dispensed if the pharmacist is not there. We can't expect one pharmacist to work all the time?
Mm-hmm. Right. You have the pharmacist, and you'll have, you know, of course, pharmacy tech. But if the pharmacist wants to go to Europe, right, they're going to be gone two weeks. That's why we would do the RFQ for staffing, for staffing coverage, so that the pharmacy always stays open.
So, that's going to be an additional charge?
The RFQ would just be how much it would cost to, yes, additional charge from the 1.1, answer your question.
But to have this additional staffing...
When needed.
Coverage.
When needed.
So, we only pay for it when...
When needed.
But we still have to need it. I mean, we're going to need it all the time because, okay, let's say we went with Tuesday through Saturday. They can't work and have one day off. I mean, we're...
Well, I think Tuesday through Saturday, still gives them Sunday Monday off. They want them to go on vacation.
Vacation or sick days.
That would be the...
You need to do part-time coverage for that.
Okay. And, okay, and, I'm sorry, the three CMAs?
Mm-hmm. Medical assistance.
The people take your blood pressure.
Okay, so, that's what I was asking, to see if that's what those people were.
And these nurse practitioners, maybe I didn't cover that clearly, these nurse practitioners and the PAs, they can actually write prescriptions as well.
Okay. Our estimated annual salary cost is $760,000. And if we go by the graph, even if we got our numbers up to the 15, 16, 30%, that's not covering salary at all. That's a big concern for me because that's putting us in the hole instead of saving us money. And with the figures that, okay, and I'm sorry, I just saw that slide. On the exam and waiting room, it said each exam room estimated cost is $3,500 to $5,000, furnishing four out of... Why not all eight?
Well, I mean, you certainly can. I was just giving an estimate to, I would recommend four at first until you get more people through the door, and then you can purchase another four for the other four waiting rooms, or four exam rooms.
And on the breakdown that you showed us of how much we would be saving, that was just for employees only, correctly. So, if we do cover all covered dependents, do we have any...
Yes, we sure do. This is the estimated employee-only slide, and that's about at the 15, 16, 30, and 5, $639,000. At the 10, 10, 5, and 2, it's $281,000. But if we open this up to all members, the dollar amount would go from $523,000, it would double, to $1.1 million.
Okay. But that's still looking at, even with that, then we're only looking at about $300,000 profit over our salary cost.
That's pretty good. I'll take $300,000 profit.
Really? When we're about, when we're a million in the hole, that's not going to help us?
First year? Woo!
Well, but if we don't do this, the hole continues to get bigger. Remember, this is not only intended to kind of stem and save us some of the money, but also slow down the growth of our healthcare plan that's costing us more and more all the time if we do this. And one of the things here that, they were very conservative, we had quite a bit of discussion over this. The ER visits, they're saying if we divert 3% steerage, that means if last month, 100 of our employees and dependents went to the emergency room for a runny nose, stuffy head, if we only moved 3% of that, three out of the 100 that went, or whatever the number would be, that would be that savings. I really would hope that through our education of our employees, we reroute more of those employees that are going to the emergency room for non-emergent things and charging us. By the way, they're saying $900. The last time I went to an emergency room was $2,000 for the ER visit and $500 for the doctor that was there. And so, I know the numbers they've got are negotiated prices. But see, these high-dollar items that is eating us alive in our healthcare is something that we need to steer away and say, look, why are you going to the ER for a runny nose when we've got a clinic where you'll know the doctor, you'll know the pharmacist, they'll tell you about your prescription, and we're going to make it convenient for you to be able to get in and out and go see your doctor. So, that's the steerage that we need to do for savings. So, there's two sides of the equation on the savings. One is this hard-dollar amount that we know is, right now, an estimate of how much we're going to save, but also what are we saving at the other end? Because think about it, these 7,000 people are not going somewhere else for care. They're going through us, and we're saving money. So, there's two sides of the equation that converge here.
Okay. So, I mean, how would we get that number? I mean, because what I'm looking at is we're saving $300,000. So, how is that, I mean, please, explain to me, how is that helping our healthcare plan?
It's huge. We're going to be saving $300,000 when over a year period, we went up by $4 million. So, we're saving some money, and we're stemming the growth. The cost of healthcare is going to continue to go up. But, you know, when we're, this is mainly on the office visit, and it's really, again, my turn, I'll have more to say on that, but for example, on the pharmacy side of the house, okay? Last year, we spent $11.7 million on pharmaceuticals. You can't tell me with this plan, if we hire a pharmacist, hire a pharmacy tech, and I get a truckload of medications or drugs, that we're going to spend $11 million on drugs. We're not. And our advisors, our consultants have told me, we'll save even more money at that end of the house once that gets rolling. Because right now, we're paying the manufacturer of the drug, and who knows how many middle people in between there, and then we're paying a pharmacist, and we're paying Walgreens or Walmarts. All those people make money along the way. I just assume buy the medication directly, so, even if we don't buy it at the Walgreen or Walmart price, all we have to beat is their profit margin. So, two sides. One is, do we save money and actually start showing a big difference? But number two, we also stem the growth of the cost of, if a diabetic patient wants to come in and have their blood glucose checked, if they want to check their blood pressure. By the way, I see Mr. Gata's comment about, well, I'm not going to want to go to that clinic because some people will see me. We know a lot of people for privacy reasons may not want to go, but you know who we're going to get a lot here? Everybody whose kids are sick with a flu or a cold or something, that they're paying a lot at Summit, or they're paying a lot at one of these other urgent care, they can go through here, and for $10, they can get the treatment and the drugs and out the door.
Yeah.
Ms. Gonzalez?
Yes, sir.
That's a really good question. I'm going to put our CFO to heat to the fire real quick. I mean, you deal every day with money, and that's what you, you know, that's what you get paid for. Now, I'm going to ask you to give me your opinion on this, honestly. What do you think?
I think with respect to clinic, there's always timing. I think timing is important. And I do think that, right now, we're in year two of a three-year change in our healthcare plan. And without going and spending a million dollars, perhaps we should consider that first before we go and consider clinic. If we're going to year two, let's see if by year three, if we have to make that year three change, those changes will be sufficient to keep our healthcare plan in the black. I do think there are a lot of merits with respect to a clinic, but I do think perhaps the timing might be a little off. So, having said that, Mr. Gonzalez, I think that's something that's the merit, but I would think we should wait until after year three of our changes to the healthcare plan and see if perhaps those changes are sufficient to keep this healthcare plan in the black. If they're not, then perhaps we should consider.
Okay. And you just heard what he said. When we raise the cost on our employees and we continue to raise the cost on our district, if that's solvent, then we're okay. This potentially can save us money now and in the near future. And so, waiting a year, we lose money. Because what he just said is, let's wait, and next year, we're going to raise the premiums on our employees some more? Let's raise the cost some more? And if that makes it even, we keep paying money to a lot of other people when we could save a lot of money here and maybe stem some of that cost, let's not do that. I don't think we should wait. Now, I have other comments I certainly want to make, but that's what he just said.
Well, and again, it's not an overlay of a million dollars, right, right off the bat.
Right.
So, I mean, there's, it's not a total...
Like, it's a risk, no matter what.
Either way.
Either way, it's a risk. Either way, we keep going the way we're going, and probably, you know, putting in $9 million this year, and then probably still having to put in a couple more million the following.
Well, so, some of the changes we made certainly has stemmed some of the, some of the increase. We were going up $4 to $5 million a year. It looks like this year, it's not that much, maybe one or two. That was year one.
After we put the $9 million.
Yes. So, hopefully, with that $9 million, I mean, our hope is that by the end of this fiscal year, we'll end up in the black. It might be $500,000, it might be a million. I don't know. It all depends on the lag report. And those are expenditures, there are claims that are paid in August, but they really are attributed to June. Last year, when we put the $4.5 million of fund balance into the healthcare plan, I thought it was enough to keep us in the black. Obviously, people are realizing that we're changing our healthcare plan, and so, they did a lot of things in the summer that could happen again this year. And so, they ended up, you know, we ended up a little bit in the red, so.
Ms. Gonzalez? Did I understand correctly? If we, if we don't go this route, we're going to raise the healthcare next year again?
Well, we're making changes to healthcare plan. And he's correct. Some of the changes are higher deductibles for our employees, higher co-pays for our employees, so to speak. We're still keeping the same amount of contribution in our budget. However, the directive from the board was that if we have to, at the end of the year, we make whatever contribution is necessary from our fund balance to make sure that this healthcare plan is in the black. Because this healthcare plan is gold. We're going to do whatever we can to make sure it's solvent.
And if we go this route, we will not, we will not raise our healthcare plans, this is $10 visit.
Well, I would, I would think that we would be doing both in tandem, right? I mean, it depends. I mean, but this one, you're going to outlay some cash. And, and as he said, you're looking at about two to three years of possible deficits on the books. What he's saying is that there'll be some deficits because we're going to be outlaying the cash, number one, and what we're getting in revenues from the clinic might be, might be not sufficient to cover the expenses. But what he's saying is that we're directing those expenses to the clinic, and so, we're not going to be getting charges from Summit and so forth. And that's another indirect expense that's going to be savings to the, to the plan. So, I hope that answered your question.
Mr. Gonzalez?
I think one of the biggest operation words in this whole thing is the word "if", "if". I mean, we don't know, we, I know we have $9 million deficit. I know that one. This is an if, a big if. The other thing is that on the drugs that have been brought up, it seems that it wants to be put in that this is going to continue all the time. And that is not necessarily true. The fact that right now, as we speak, they're, they're changing the way that prescriptions are going to be lowered in price, big changes in that. I don't think that the timing is correct for this. I think I would rather wait two, three years and find out where we are, so we have a clearer view of what the problem out there is before we spend all this money. We spend it right now, and if we lose, I mean, 13 visits per day. I mean, any service, any doctor, you ask him, you're only going to get 13 or 17 people per day, he's probably going to get out of business.
Well, let me clarify that, by the way, just for the information of the committee. I don't know if you all know...
I don't know if you all know this or not, but currently, these standalone emergency rooms, not the urgent clinics, not the doctors' offices, which I'm working on, all these standalone emergency rooms, like Las Palmas del Sol over here on the east side, in order for them to make their payroll, they need three to seven patients a day. And this is a standalone emergency room, okay? They're gouging us through the nose on costs for healthcare when our folks go there, because that's all they need to make payroll. When they go above that, they're in hog heaven. And so, consequently, thirteen patients that we don't pay somebody else for, and that we provide better and directed care, not to mention, Mr. Carmona didn't mention, about twenty-five percent of our folks have no dedicated PCPs. So we don't know how many of our especially lower-paid individuals, bus drivers, groundskeeper, are walking around there prediabetic or with hypertension, that are liable to go to full-blown diabetes or strokes, that just haven't been assessed because they don't want to spend the twenty-five-dollar co-pay when they go to the clinic. You know, or the story that was related to me when we went to go visit Mesquite, you have, for example, in their case, a custodian, and it's him and his two or three kids, and they all catch the flu at the same time, three days before payday, and he says, "You all got to wait because I can't do twenty-five, 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 twenty-five." And in the meanwhile, does somebody catch pneumonia, a small child catches pneumonia, and now they're in the hospital. It's okay, he has his benefits, but then that transfers to cost to the district, which we can alleviate that. My number one goal, by the way, was provide better healthcare for our employees and maintain their coverage so that they can be protected, they need to. But the number two, there is a cost savings here. Folks, when Goldman Sachs has opened their own clinic, by the way, when Cigna, our third-party representative, has their own clinic in their office, I saw it, I went with Mr. Carmona and Mr. Campoya, they have their own clinic, and they're an insurance company, you know? Folks, this is, when the other two school districts in town have one, when Target at their headquarters has opened one, folks, this is almost kind of a no-brainer for us as a money savings for our clinic. These numbers, I've argued with Ms. McLaughlin to no end, are highly conservative. You know, we're also not going to hire maybe three CMAs on the first day, maybe a couple as we get rolling. You know, we don't need a doctor, a nurse practitioner, a PA. We could probably go with a doctor and a nurse practitioner to begin with, or a PA, and so those costs would be stemmed in the early going. I was told, and I know Mesotos in the audience, but one of the associations had mentioned that if we have a clinic, they're going to encourage a lot of employees to come on in and get their physicals done. So how much of that are we stemming and being a benefit to the employee? And by the way, I don't advocate the just-employee thing. This needs to be employee and dependent. People need to be able to bring in their kids to come in. By the way, you run out of your asthma medicine, you can run over to Summit and pay a bunch there and then go pick up your prescription, or you can go to our clinic and get your prescription there for ten dollars. If you see the doctor, if you don't even see the doctor, be less than that.
No, and it's alone, I mean, just to give you an example, my mother, right now, she, for high-blood-pressure medicine, medication, every time she needs a refill, she has to go back to the doctor to get a checkup. When before, she would just call it in, and they'd, "Okay, I'll be..." Now she has to go back.
Well, because she can pay for an office visit. And then...
There you go. Now, one of the advantages that you see here that I saw, ladies and gentlemen, is when you do go to a summit, or an urgent care center, or one of these other clinics, it's a revolving door of doctors and nurses and nurse practitioners and PAs there. You rarely see the same person, okay? There's no track record with the doctor. In this case, one of the things that I would like our district to do is, as we hire this doctor, ninety percent of the time, it's going to be him or her that you see. Yeah, will there have to be somebody to cover on a sick day, or, God forbid, our doctor gets appendicitis and is out for a couple of weeks? Yeah, those things happen, and we just need to plan for that, for those covers. But ninety-nine percent of the time, you're going to see the same doctor who knows you. By the way, the pharmacist will probably know you by name and say, you know, "Hey Joe, how's your medication? How you been feeling? Does it give you these kinds of symptoms or that?" And the people at Mesquite, the employees that were using the clinic, enjoyed it, and the clinic people, the doctor there, and the nurse practitioner said, and the pharmacist, "I'm not treating patients, I'm treating my coworkers. It's important for me, for them to be healthy and for them to be taken care of." And so, I think there's a huge benefit in less absenteeism, more productivity, our employees feeling good about this. Somebody said about the location, so Mr. Campoya did a survey of the custodians, and with a raise of hands, they all said they wouldn't mind coming all the way to see the doctor.
Because if you're talking, you're still going to have to go to Summit, or, that's where everything's at anyways.
So, I think, folks, this is something, by the way, this is something we can try, and if we, it's not like we need to close a school. If it doesn't work, we close a clinic. No harm done, all these people are licensed, they're going to get a job tomorrow. But what if this is, I firmly believe it'll be a benefit, but what if this is a huge benefit? I think we ought to give this a try, or give this some thought, because I really think these numbers are conservative. The cost of healthcare is going to keep going up, and if we can buy some things at cost, we can save money. Everything from land sits for blood, you know, for blood glucose, everything, we can buy it at cost, not at a Walmart or Walgreens cost, but we still can beat the profit.
President Nahara?
Yes, sir.
Ms. McLaughlin or Mr. Gonzalez? Now, the hours haven't been determined, because there's a questionnaire for that, they fill out, so, but just to get an idea, you got Mesquite, neighboring districts, what are their hours? Because I'm pretty sure ours will be similar to theirs. Maybe not, but just to kind of get an idea, what are their days and what are their hours?
So they have, they would open, if I recall correctly, from Mesquite, seven in the morning to noon, they will break for lunch. They have staggered lunches, and some additional staff will come in later on throughout the day. While we were there visiting, I think around nine o'clock, the shift that would stay until 7:00 PM came in. So I think they don't have all their staff there at a specific schedule. They stagger there so they can have coverage throughout the day.
So I heard you say seven PM, so seven AM, seven PM, more or less?
And it was Monday to Friday.
And the days?
Monday to Friday.
Monday to Fridays.
So our advantage is, if we do a Saturday, that may be more convenient to the employee. Folks, quite frankly, for this to be successful, one of the things that everybody else is offering that we need to beat is the convenience. It has to be convenient when they call for an appointment, it has to be convenient if they can get into as a walk-in, it has to be convenient times of days so that they can get their work done and out. El Paso is notorious where you go to the doctor and you sit for three hours waiting to see the doctor. Or that magical ten-minute thing, yes. You know, I mean, if you go see an orthopedic or something, we're not going to do those types of services, but the type of clinic that I think would be of most benefit to us and a biggest benefit, something that mimics Summit or Upper Valley Urgent Care. Not a standalone ER, we don't want to go there. Somebody comes in there with a heart attack, we're going to call 911. But somebody comes in there to get their blood sugar checked, somebody needs their asthma medication, somebody needs those types of things, that we can assess. If somebody has a small cut, we can fix that, sprains, strains, those kinds of things. And again, they're seen right away. I don't know if anybody recently has hurt a limb, but I had a, one of my employees hurt his knee. He went to the emergency room, they splinted, and his orthopedic appointment was two weeks later. You know, by then, the thing is either healed or not. You know, this way, they could be seen very rapidly, and we would have referrals to other specialties as necessary. And this is kind of a no-harm thing, because if it doesn't work, if we say, "My God, we're losing more than what we were losing before," we back out. But what if this helps us slow down the growth of our plan? We're at fifty-four million dollars, how soon before we hit sixty million? But will this keep us a little bit longer in business? Because I will tell you, when they say our insurance plan is gold, it's gold. I've got employees where I work, and employees that I know with the city of El Paso, that have tried to access some of the services our employees want, and they can't have them. You're not going to be able to easily get to a Mayo Clinic, to an MD Anderson, to Children's Hospital in Dallas with some of these other plans, or you're stalled while they're trying to get insurance coverage. Or they can get you to Dallas Children, but they won't pay the plane to get you there. How do we protect our employees? This is one way to try to stem the cost.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes, Ms. Nahara. Looking just at the time that most people pick between four and eight PM. This one, I feel.
Take him.
Now, I think I can safely say that the majority of the people would like to pick a doctor that is within their neighborhood, so that they can easily do this. Now, if by five o'clock, most of the employees are at their home, so, I mean, going to their clinic or their doctor would be easier, especially if it's between four and six PM or whatever. Now, the other thing, at one point, we were trying to say that it was steerage, that we were trying to steer, you know, the people to their PCP and stuff like that, to keep them with their primary doctor. Now, which one is it? Because it appears now that the doctor at our clinic is going to see them more often and stuff like that, that then we're losing the steerage somewhere there, we lost that.
No, they need to explain, we discussed this a lot, maybe they can explain.
The steerage that we talked about on the, are you talking about steerage that health plans are talking to you about steerage, or steerage that the definition in this template?
I'm talking about the fact that, I don't think, and I can talk with some experience in this area, you're going to, I went out to pick a doctor that would be good for me in a lot of aspects, like the illness that I had, the qualifications and stuff like that. I've been with him for ten years or so. So I know exactly, you know, some days I have had gone to the hospital, whatever, for an emergency, whatever. But for most time, I try to schedule my visits and stuff like that, because the doctor knows exactly what I need, when I need it, and how I need it.
Right. You're an established patient.
Yeah, and so, trying to substitute that, I can see this as for cold, and this is good, but to monitor diabetes, for instance, your doctor should have a way to help you monitor diabetes, but mostly, most important here is that you, if you're diabetic, you need to take responsibility to follow the doctor's instructions. Because if you do not do that, I don't care how much money you put into it, it's not going to work.
Right. We're not replacing your primary care physician with the clinic, it's more for convenience. You can't, anyone, like, you know, I think I have high blood pressure, I probably do. Say, I haven't been checked out yet. And so, that's it, yeah. I was late for an earlier meeting. So, you know, I honestly probably do. I don't have time to wait a month to see my PCP, okay? There's no availability. But if I could go just to the clinic, I used to work for University Health System in San Antonio, okay? They had an employee clinic. I would go down there, and, hey, someone check my blood pressure, see how high it is. But I mostly used the clinic when I had allergies. Cedar, I don't know, I'm allergic to cedar. And I just couldn't take off of work, because I couldn't leave. I'd just run down to the clinic, and I'd actually get my medication, and I would leave. So that's just kind of, those are like the examples I think the clinic is going to be used for, not necessarily to replace your PCP. We do not want to replace your PCP because you have an established PCP, but there's so many people that don't even have an established PCP and aren't even going to the doctor. Now, that's what I think they want to capture.
And you put your finger on the problem. You cannot make the horse to go drink water. You can't do that, okay? It's been tried, it's not going to help. Now, I check my blood pressure twice a day. When I go to my primary doctor, and most doctors everywhere, they give you a three-month supply. So just calling into your pharmacy, this is my...
Not necessarily.
I said most, most doctors, for most prescriptions, unless it's a unique medication, which you're not going to go to a clinic for that purpose.
But if you probably pay, and I'm just saying, you probably pay, I don't know what your co-pay is, off the top of my head, that you're paying for your prescription, but if you could walk in and get a generic prescription and it didn't cost anything, I think some people that are in tight budgets might just choose that option.
I'm on social security. I don't think you can get any tighter than that, okay? I don't think you can get any tighter than that. And I find it that I get all my medications, there are even places you can go to get assistance with that, okay? We are in the business of educating, we're not in the business of healthcare. And, you know, I care for everybody. I don't want to see someone suffer from diabetes and stuff like that, but there is a way to monitor your illness, your blood pressure, everything that may be wrong in conjunction with your doctor, that you would follow the right path. But if you're not willing to do that, the rest don't matter. And asking us to pay because they don't want to do that, that's a different story.
This is not intended to replace anything. This is intended to provide a service to our employees and stem the cost. It's not like we're going to force employees that didn't come before to come now. If somebody doesn't want to come, they're not going to come. But what's happening right now is a number of employees, like Ms. McLaughlin just mentioned, oftentimes go to these other services for convenience, and it's costing us a lot of money. And in order for us to preserve a gold healthcare system that we have, a great insurance program that we have, not only do we need to continue to look at opportunities to improve the healthcare of our employees, but we need to look at opportunities to save money. And paying for some of these things that cost are a money-saving thing. I noticed that we have a list of some of the things that may be treated or assessed. By the way, those things are just a starting point. Some of those things will be dependent on the doctor, what he or she feels comfortable they can do, what equipment we need. And by the way, if you all know, medicine changes. Some of the lab work would be done, like, for example, through LabCorp or LabQuest is how the way Mesquite does it, but that doesn't mean we're not going to potentially purchase point-of-service machines where we can run a quick CBC, we can run glucose, we can run A1C right on the spot. We have the cartridges to run that, and that saves us even more money on us contracting with Quest, Diagnostic, or LabCorp by doing point-of-service lab. Those things would be things that would mature over time based on what the doctor can do. I'll tell you what the other side of the coin is, Isleta has an employee clinic, and Isleta's clinic is like a doctor's office. You go in, you see a nurse practitioner, she gives you a prescription, and sends you on your way. I think we need to step it up and be better than that, because you just heard, she used to work for a healthcare system, and they had a clinic. Folks, if this was not a money-saving, an advantage to those companies, they wouldn't open it. Not everybody's as good-hearted as we are. It is also a money saver. I told you, Goldman Sachs, Target, Cigna had their clinic, we visited it. She worked for a healthcare program, and they had a clinic for the employee clinic. Who has?
The county?
The county has it. Folks, in this case, if we don't take this step, we may be a little bit behind. And by the way, this is a step we can take. If it doesn't work, we back out, and we made an effort to help our employees' healthcare and save some money, and if not, we just keep pumping a bunch of more money into the healthcare system from our perspective, and we ask the employees to pump a bunch more money into their, from their perspective in order to be covered, or we cut benefits. And I would prefer not to cut benefits.
Any other questions?
Now, let's keep talking for another hour.
Yeah, it's been fun. But what I would recommend, Ms. Nahara, is that we ask the administration to bring this item to the full board on Tuesday, and we can take a vote, yes or no, and then we move forward. This has dragged on for quite some time, and let's make a decision which way we all feel like we want to go, and put our best foot forward either way.
Okay.
I have another idea, maybe we can postpone the clinic until we know exactly what to do with the nine million and all that money, and then, we can look at it, at the situation at that point, instead of rushing into something that it may not turn out okay for us.
This isn't a rush, we've talked about this for three years.
Yeah.
And we hired Gallagher over a year ago to do the assessment. I think we need to make a decision. If we really don't want to do it, let's not do it, but let's not quit wasting staff time and money. We're losing money there, too.
I just want to say, just, ma'am, just two things. First of all, that nine-million dollars, we're going to post that this month, after period thirteen, so it's going to be a year-end entry that we're going to go ahead and add to the general fund, I mean, to the healthcare fund. And hopefully, in a couple of months, we can tell you where we stand with respect to the healthcare plan. the healthcare plan. And secondly, I'm not the only person who's conservative, I just want the support to know that.
Okay, so it makes us a world go round, that's why we're so polite.
And so, we will bring this item to the board meeting on next Tuesday for a board vote.
Yes, and just to clarify, the item will be listed, but it's going to include all job descriptions on the staffing that you have there, so, just as an FYI, so you're okay?